We vibing, we vibing. Yo, it's a vibes.
Yes.
We back, we back, we back. What up, culture nights? We here on a Thursday today, uh huh.
Yes.
Okay, but we are back. It's your boy Jersey with a brand new episode of Black Culture The Breakdown, and I am your boy Jersey. Alright, we got a whole lot going on. We do have my homeboy Antonio Brown on the live today that was gonna be giving us the breakdown on what's really going down in Atlanta.
Yes.
Alright, what up David? I see you in here early. Antonio is already in the house, so let's get the conversations started. What up Lotus? I see you in here too. Alright, how we feeling everybody? Tony on the log. Ah, there he go.
What's up brother?
What's going on man? Welcome to the log.
Hey, thanks for having me, man.
Of course, of course. So first of all, tell people who you are and what you do. Let's start off there.
Well, uh, my name is Antonio Brown. I'm, I'm an Atlanta city councilman. I am completing uh, my term. I ran in a special election and it concludes in January. Uh, but I've been on council for two and a half years and have had an opportunity to do some really incredible stuff, and I just finished running for mayor of Atlanta.
Oh, man, there's a whole bunch definitely get into. I know like the, the whole mayoral election is just really interesting and, 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 and taking like um, a lot of media attention right now. Uh, but, but before we even get to where you ended up there, let's walk it back to the beginning for the people that don't know. How did you get into politics, my brother? Tell us.
Man, I was, I was spirit led into politics. It was a space that, you know, I, I would have never thought I would be in only because I grew up Jehovah Witness most of my life, so I never really saw myself in politics. We didn't participate in politics. We didn't feel the effects of, of local government. So for me, it was really a spirit led journey and I didn't understand it originally and now I do, I, I get it. It was, you know, sometimes you have to be in the belly of the beast to understand the beast. And I've had the privilege of understanding the beast and now the work I, I can do outside of council can work towards dismantling that beast so it can become an inclusive system for everyone.
Definitely. And, and I think that, that part right there, that last part. Definitely crucial. Um, now, you are the youngest member. Antonio? Antonio?
I'm sorry, I, I put it in my head.
There you go.
Because the video stopped. I apologize.
No, it's all good. I can see you. We good. We back.
Yes.
Alright, alright, so now, so now, bring it back, bring it back even. You mentioned that inclusive. You are the youngest person on the city council of Atlanta, right? You're the, you're the youngest person to be affected. Talk to us about how you even were able to overcome that and get the people to tap into what you were trying to bring.
Yeah, I, I was one of the youngest on city council. Um, and for me, you know, I didn't, I wanted more young people involved in local government. I wanted them to really be in a place where they understood how local government impacted their lives. But honestly, um, what it ended up being within my two years is really serving a community of people that have been left behind for so long and trying to make them whole in the process in which I was serving and ensuring that they had their fair share of what, what they were due as constituents uh, in one of the largest cities in the United States. Um, that also, you know, was the civil rights hub. You know, uh, the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. served the very communities that I now represent. So that's really what it became. And then of course, the social justice movement happened here um, in Atlanta after the death of Ahmaud Aubrey and Ray Sharp Brooks. So continuing that work also became a, a big stronghold in, in, in my, in my uh, time as a council member.
Definitely. Um, man, super dope and inspiring the work that you're doing in Atlanta, man. And I think you definitely representing for, for millennials in, in understanding that people of the generation should be a part of making a lot of these major situations, a lot of major decisions that affect this generation. Does that make sense? So I, I like that. You definitely have that to offer. Now, before you got into politics, you actually developed an art curriculum for colleges all over the country. Um, and you actually had a clothing line as well. Um, so talk to us about your endeavors before.
Yeah, so uh, you know, before I became a council member, I owned a men's uh, fashion at leisure wear company called Level 13. And it was really interesting because I didn't come from a background of fashion. I didn't, you know, um, I had no technical experience in design. And it was really just a passion and aspiration of mine that I had an interest in and pursued and was able to manifest into existence. And it's really even more interesting because through that experience, I created the college curriculum, the small business entrepreneurship program that got adapted into fifty-two colleges nationwide around entrepreneur, teaching folks who have an aspiration of being an entrepreneur, how to do that, how to manifest that. And, you know, and then eventually I launched into Nordstrom's nationwide and then from there was recognized by the state capital and then ran for city council.
Dope, dope. But now, people through that ambition, man, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm thirty. I'm not gonna say that all millennials don't have that extra sauce. But I must say, there's not a lot of millennials that I see really kick the door down. I actually see the generation below us, uh, like Generation Z and Generation X like really coming out swinging. What was that, that made you be like, yo, I'm not trying to do no regular non-fa, so I wanna figure out what it is that I wanna do and go for it?
Really, it was, it was because of my rebellious spirit. Like, I'm a rebellion. I, I rebel and, you know, and, and I wanted the freedom to do what I wanted to do and be passionate about and also be able to help people the way I wanted to help people. And to do that, I quickly realized that I had to have my own of whatever it was.
Yes.
To do that.
Definitely. Don't mind my sound effects. They just hit a party.
Yes.
So they'll be agreeing with you, whatever you got to say today. But yes, man, I definitely agree. I know you linked with Jason Derulo with that clothing line. Um, and, and that's a big move, you know what I'm saying? It's definitely um, a power play to get such a massive celebrity to jump on board. How were you able to make that connection?
Man, it was all divine. Like Jason's a great guy and it was a great opportunity um, with him and, and it was, you know, it's funny because I remember his stylist reached out to my, to me and, and, and my team about him wearing a pair of shoes on Good Morning America and I had no idea who he was at the time. And I just said yes, and like little did I know he did flips and all that kinda stuff. And he ruined my only samples and then we kinda went back and forth and he invited me out to LA and that's kinda like how he came on board. But even like with um, me bringing Little Baby into the social justice movement and him filming A Bigger Picture, like all of those things happened through divine timing. Like, you know, I was leading a march throughout Atlanta of about four thousand people and I had a ton of elected officials with me. And then he, he came and, and, and saw me on TV and said he wanted to do something with me and we coll- we connected and was able to move mountains, you know? So a lot of that just happens when I believe your actions are aligned with that in which you seek in your life, that the universe conspires and gives you everything that you need to be successful in it.
Absolutely, hundred percent. Yes. Okay, I definitely agree with that. Um, and, and now, you have an interesting twist on how you do politics. You do like to collaborate with the celebrities. You do like to, to bring that, this generation into what's going on. Um, you mentioned you, you collaborating with Little Baby. Um, and I also saw that you just gave Lil Nas X um, his own day in Atlanta. Um, and Jason Derulo, the list goes on and on with other people that you've collaborated with. When did you realize that celebrity influence is actually really powerful?
Well, influence, regardless if it's someone that we identify as a celebrity or not, is powerful. I think having the ability to sway another person's belief system. You know, it, it takes a very centered and grounded, um, you know, purpose. And I think a lot of times, the confidence that celebrities have and/or influencers have because they are grounded in, in their truth and, and, and who they are, it's able to sway another person's belief system. So through time, folks have utilized people of influence to shape culture, to shape our society, to shape our politics and government. And you see that happening now. You see how government is shifting and how there's a new generation rising to a place of power and I see that the table of government. Um, and I think that, that is something that I believe we all have access to do, to the ability to convene, to bring people together is our power as human beings. And I've always been intentional trying to do that, but I've never tried to control it. I've allowed it to just naturally happen as it's supposed to. And it's just been a really cool experience.
Absolutely. Super dope. Yes. Atlanta is definitely, I've never been to Atlanta. I'm here in New York City. And I actually have a dance school out here called Lotus Creations Academy. It's a nonprofit. And everybody that comes to our school out here, a lot of dancers, they're facing Atlanta and they're like, yo, Atlanta is dope right now. It's the Mecca for everything art. Everybody's are moving out here. And even some of the dancers in New York that are heavily trained, that will back up a whole bunch of artists are moving to Atlanta. What is it about Atlanta?
Well, you know, I think that Atlanta is just one of those culturally driven cities that is really hyper-focused around entrepreneurship and small business and also the creative arts field, that it just, it just really is a place, a melting pot for people who really wanna do some really incredible shit. It gives them the ability to do it here in Atlanta. Um, I also believe when you think about it, Atlanta has eighteen thousand small businesses. So that's a lot of small businesses in a, in a space of about five hundred thousand residents. Um, and so, so folks are very entrepreneurial coming here. So a lot of times, there's a lot of opportunity for other people to grow and prosper. And I think that's what attracts people to Atlanta.
Okay, well, let me ask you this. On a, on a, on a, on a business slash personal tip, do you think opening a dance school in Atlanta would be a smart move in twenty twenty?
Uh, hold on, I'm sorry. We're trying to fix my phone real quick. Bear with me.
Go ahead and get you.
Yeah, no, it's not working. Um, but uh, no, I don't wanna leave this. I'm so sorry.
Our culture to break down, no problem. We got Antonio Brown. I was with us tonight.
Yes.
Okay, we just getting our lives together and we are here to learn about everything going on in Atlanta. So ask your questions in the comments and I will read them.
So say that again to me. Say your question again. I apologize.
Yeah. Do you think that it is smart, I have a school here in New York, to do a second location in Atlanta as a, as a performing arts academy in twenty twenty? That sound like a smart idea?
So do you know who Anthony Burrell is?
Anthony Burrell. Sounds very familiar.
Okay, I want you to look him up.
Okay.
But he moved to Atlanta to launch a, a dance like academy. And it's, it's been a really incredible one. And, you know, he's had some, some, you know, experiences of like building a business here and building a dance school here and raising funds and doing all those kinds of things. So I think he's someone that can really, really help you and bring some insight to you on what Atlanta is, is a great place to operate in the art space, but I think you have to be very structured and you have to be very, um, I, I think you really have to be prepared because this, Atlanta is great of a place that it is. It's super expensive to do business. You know, especially in a city like this where you kinda gotta drive people to your spaces.
More than New York City though?
I think New York City has a little bit easier. Because, yeah, man, there's so many people in New York City to reach your target demographic and audience is a lot easier to do when you're in a city with the amount of people that's in our entire state. You, you get?
I, I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying, but sometimes I feel like in New York, there's so many businesses compete with that sometimes the audience or, or, or the customers don't know where to go. So it ends up becoming less customers for the person unless you have that clout. So I feel like it can kinda go both ways.
Yeah, see, I don't believe that. And let me tell you why. Because I believe in every business, um, you know, business is what you make of it, right? The, the thing is, you can only attract what you have. New York has a lot of everything. Atlanta's, the city population in Atlanta is five hundred thousand. The city of New York is ten times our population of people. So that means it keeps calling in. I can't, I cannot recreate four and a half million people in the city of Atlanta. But in New York, you have access to those people. So it really comes to how you're allocating resources. And then how are you targeting a specific demographic that is aligned with the values of, of your business and what you're selling, what you're offering? And then, and then what measures are you willing to take and pay for to reach them?
Interesting. I do think that small businesses are doing better in Atlanta from what I've been watching than you here in New York. New York has the big corporate machines and a lot of mega money out here. But for the smaller guys, I definitely feel like the rent is so expensive just to get, your overhead is just expensive. So to be able to generate that amount of income, to be able to kill your overhead and be able to be successful, it's a small amount of people that look like me and you that are able to really accomplish that. Um, whereas I'm realizing a lot of people are packing up and going to Atlanta and finding more success in smaller niches because they feel like it's less competition. But it's interesting to hear your point of view though.
Let me tell you, let me tell you this. I, I'm, I'm building a business right now in Atlanta. I can take this concept and build it in New York and turn it into a multimillion dollar business like Kill, Kill, Kill The Game.
Okay.
And it wouldn't matter what else is out there.
Got you.
So it's really about if you understand how to operate business and if you understand the intricate details of what it takes to build a base. It's like Supreme. I remember when people didn't even know what the hell Supreme was. You know, now it's a cult following and, you know, it's almost like a cult following with their base and, and their success and, and, and what they've been able to do partnering with like Louis Vuitton and other major brands. But, I mean, they don't do anything extra really. Like their stuff is cool, but they're not making things, you know, you know, so outrageous that no one can do it. They've just learned how to reach an audience that believes in their products and their values and they've treated them well and they support him.
Absolutely. Um, and, and Supreme definitely blew up and, and is still relevant now. Um, they may not get as much clout as some of these other uh, fashion brands get now. And that's one, something I would like to talk to you about. Virgil Abloh just passed away. Um, legendary kinda off-white Louis Vuitton you just mentioned. Um, how inspirational was he to you, um, just as a designer and as an entrepreneur and someone that's just been in the game before? The mark that he left, how influential is that to black people?
Well, I think that he broke barriers, right? And I think Virgil was just such a creative force. And he was able to project uh, just that, 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 that creative passion for being, you know, a black brother in this business doing incredible things. And it inspires so many people to believe that they can do it too. I remember I was launching Level Thirteen and at the time he had just become the creative director over at uh, Louis Vuitton. He was doing, you know, their stuff and it was just so inspiring to see like, wow. Like, you know, this is a brother that did not allow his environments or conditions or did not allow, unfortunately, sometimes some implicit bias to keep him from being successful and accomplishing great things. Now, granted, he did do some great work with Kanye West that really propelled him to a position to be recognized and noticed by a brand like Louis Vuitton, but the dude was creative and just incredible in design. And it's unfortunate uh, that he's no longer with us, but I'm grateful that he's also not struggling no more battling cancer and that he's at a place of peace, um, at least spiritually, uh, as he continues to transition on.
Definitely, definitely. Well said, man. I definitely agree. Um, rest in peace to Virgil Abloh. And we'll definitely continue to support everything that he's put out and definitely keep his name alive because he's gone down and was a black fact legend. So RIP Virgil. Alright, let's move on to the next questions. Alright, so now, I know you are currently not running for mayor anymore. Do you wanna elaborate on what exactly happened?
Uh, you said, what, what happened would lead to me not winning?
No, not running anymore.
Oh, yeah, I just, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not running. I, I, I mean, I, I didn't make it into the runoff within the mayor's race and um, you know, I learned some incredible things uh, running as mayor and, and it really put some things in perspective for me with regards to just politics in general. And one of the biggest takeaways that I would say I learned through the process of me running for mayor, outside of the fact that I was able to reshape the conversation from being about crime to being about generational poverty and how we need to address the root of these issues that are driving po- poverty, which is creating a side effect, which is crime, right? And uh, I would say that for me, um, being in this space really taught me that whenever I wanna do something again in my life, that I never wanna be in a position where I have to ask something from someone. Like, like ra- trying to raise money and convince someone to believe in me um, in order to raise the money, to amplify my voice so enough people hear me and can vote for me, I'll never allow that to stop me again. And I'm gonna put myself in a financial position where I can make as much money as possible so the next time I wanna do anything, I could self-fund it and, 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 and not rely on the need of others to fund it for me to be successful.
Absolutely, man. Yes. Hundred percent. Man, that resonated, I'm sure with everybody that's on this live right now because even though just one of the something as diplomatic as a mayor, um, something like your testimony can resonate in just anybody just trying to apply for a regular job. So I even took that as um, as something that, that I could take away from that and it, sometimes you gotta bet on yourself and, and, and put yourself in position to, to accomplish what it is that you know that you were set to accomplish. So kudos to you, man, and whatever it is. Now, how could we support you moving forward for the next term? Or do you wanna run again in the, in the future?
Well, I don't think I will run for city council again. Uh, it was, it's not something that I, I'm interested in continuing to do. Uh, I just don't know yet what, what the future's gonna hold or where it's gonna lead me. Um, and I would just say, just follow along uh, my journey on social media. I changed my handle back to Antonio Is Muted, not because I, I'm, I'm muted or anything, but because that was my original handle before changing it to Antonio For ATL. And I'm gonna focus on launching this business in the next three to four months into the market and, and really try to do my best to stay a part of the community and, and help as much as I can move the city forward in the direction it should be moving in.
Absolutely. So it sounds like Antonio is politics.
Uh, I don't know about that.
Okay, okay. You know what? I'm sure the, the people actually do wanna know. Do we see you ever getting into some acting, some movies, some TV shows? Would you do that?
What, what, what made you ask that? What made you ask that?
Um, because I definitely feel like you, the charisma is that, it's kinda what I do already and you're already a natural, man, and I feel like you would be great on that. Would that's something that you consider?
You know, I don't, I don't, um, I guess I don't just put, I, I don't just X something out and just say I'm not doing it. Um, now, do I see it in my future? I'm not sure. Like, I'm, I really love business. I'm really, I'm really behind the scenes unless I have to be in front of the scenes. And I really love business so much that I like to be involved in the intricate details of doing business. So, I don't know. If, if, if my path leads me down that road, I've tried it in the past and have been on different shows in the past. But it was never like anything I was like super uberly like passionate about, like that's gonna be my pathway.
Got you. Makes sense. Man, man, you got fans out here that definitely wanna see you on TV. They wanna see you in covers. You better get, you better get what they want.
Yes.
Alright, man. So now, I wanted to ask you this. Why did you give Lil Nas X the city his own day in Atlanta? I'm just curious. What, what, what did he do for Atlanta that warranted him to have his own day?
Well, it wasn't, it was more than just what he did for Atlanta. It was what he did for the world. You know, he had one of the, well, he had several number one songs in the country on the top one hundred billboard charts as a gay African-American guy. You know, something that had never been done before with an artist that was openly gay and was openly living his life as he chose to. And, 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 and to me, that was so inspiring. And I even told him, when I presented him the proclamation, that he, he was inspiring someone like myself who would have been the first LGBTQ mayor in the history of the city to know that despite what society has sold us as what the norm is or what, what is possible, that you can break those barriers and you can defy those odds and you can be whatever you want it to be.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, definitely. And it, because it comes, I think Lil Nas X gets mixed up a lot of times with what's gimmick and what's, um, what's actually real. And, and so sometimes I think people are confused like, how he got his own day already? I mean, he's a brand new artist, but when, when you break it down for what he's done for the world, it definitely makes a whole bunch of sense. Um, and
And he's the first artist to do it that, and do it the way he did. You know, because you didn't really see that. I mean, when you think about gay artists or, or artists that are a part of the LGBTQ community that have had the global, like, he, like, Lil Nas X is a global phenomenon.
Definitely.
You know, he's breaking every barrier you can think of and, and he's doing it unapologetically the way he wants to do it. And I thought that that was so powerful and I thought it was, um, you know, worthy of the recognition of, of a city proclamation. Um, and, and that's why I gave it to him.
Okay, alright. Well, shout out to Lil Nas X. He got his own day in Atlanta.
Yes.
Shoot, that's, that's definitely an accomplishment to get a day in your city. Well, he is, it's not even the city, but
No, he is. It's the city. He's, he's from Atlanta.
Oh, he's from Atlanta?
Yeah, he's from Bankhead Courts Apartments. Yes, he's from Atlanta. Folks don't even realize that this dude is from the hood and went from sleeping on a couch to being the number one artist in the world. Not even just in the world, you know? So he's, he's done some incredible stuff and he's from Atlanta and a lot of Atlanta folks is like, why? And a lot of Atlanta folks is like, why, like, this dude is from here. He did something that no one has done from here before.
Definitely, definitely. Alright, well, maybe he should definitely rap Atlanta a little bit more so everybody would know. I didn't even know that.
Maybe so. He says he does, but maybe he needs to do it a little bit more so everybody else could feel what he says, so.
Put it in a song, Lil Max, Lil Nas X, so you know it's real. Put it in. And he might actually, he got his own day. He might actually put that in a song. That shout out to you for that. Uh, alright, so then now jumping into this, Stacey Abrams announces she's running for governor of ATL for twenty twenty-two. What are your thoughts on that, my brother?
Well, I was very inspired by it because a lot of folks in the inner circles of, you know, this political arena were talking about how she wasn't gonna run because she was making so much money doing Fair Fight, her nonprofit organization that, and she had so much, she was making so much money and has so much influence and power that it wasn't necessary, uh, that, that she, she just wasn't gonna run again. But for her to sacrifice, make a sacrifice by running again, understanding that right now, the House going into twenty twenty-two and beyond is gonna be run by Republicans. So her ability to get things done will be a lot harder for her to sacrifice herself and to go out there and run for governor, um, when she could remain, you know, very wealthy at home, doing the things she's been doing, uh, working through the organization she has. I mean, it was inspiring and, and a lot of us should take notes how to, how to truly be a testament of servant leadership, uh, in our cities and, and, and within this country.
Absolutely. Yes. Shout out to Stacey Abrams. Like, she's a real goat. Like, we still didn't forget what she did for Atlanta.
This is what she did for Atlanta right here. My state, even though it ain't really blue, it's kinda purple, but still.
Got you. Most definite, Stacey Abrams is definitely the GOAT. Alright, let's jump into Miss Felicia Moore says that she lost the mayor of the mayor race because T I was spreading misinformation about her closing strip clubs. What are your thoughts on that?
You know, I think that it's unfortunate that we run elections in an attempt to bring our opponents down and discredit their character in order to lift ourselves up and win a race. I think it's unfortunate and it's, it's happened for generations in politics. You see it on the federal, national stage as well as the state and local stage. And it's unfortunate because we should be able to run on our policies, our platforms, our strategy and inspire people to engage and get involved because of the work that we're gonna do, not trying to attack other people and bring them down. Um, and I do believe that when they started to spread that rumor, that it did really impact her. Cause people were reaching out to me, asking me if it was true. And I don't believe that it was true. I remember I said this on another outlet that I remember President Moore seeing a flyer where she was gonna be in attendance of this nightclub that I know about, that I've been to before. And that she was gonna be there and, and meeting folks. And this was before she even ran for mayor while she was still like city council president. And it was just so inspiring because I was like, oh, I didn't think he would go out and hang out at clubs. So the fact that she would be against strip clubs and all that, I don't know if that is true or not. And, um, you know, I just think it's unfortunate that, you know, that we operate under malice intent in, in trying to prove, um, why we are capable of doing a job instead of just telling the people what we're gonna do.
Okay. Now, how do you feel? Would you shut down strip clubs?
No. I mean, I think, I think they're, they're a huge part of Atlanta's culture. And I don't think President Moore would have shut down strip clubs. Um, I've talked to her personally and asked her and then she was, I mean, now would she go inside of a strip club? Probably. Uh, you know, just for the experience, but I don't think she would ever like try to shut it down. But that was just my opinion.
Yes, okay. Alright. You dope, man. Well, I feel like we've covered a whole bunch of different things today and you were really dope. What advice would you give to people that wanna get into politics on, on a level that you did, just city council? What should they look forward to and what should they be on the lookout for?
I would say that if you wanna run for government or local politics, that you start at the grassroots level and you understand your community. You get involved with your neighborhood associations or your neighborhood planning units. You get to know your city council person, your school board person. You get to know the people that are working every day. And you understand what you wanna be a part of and you get to know the residents that are civically involved. And you allow that to be kind of your basis for entering into the space regardless of what you wanna do. Because then you have some foundational knowledge and understanding of the players and the system and how it operates.
Definitely. Alright, now, people always say that politics is so dirty and stay away from politics. We can't trust them. Like, what is your experience and what is your testimony to people that say things like that?
I think, yeah, they are. I mean, yeah, I mean, you see it. I mean, you see it every day. You see what's happening now. President Moore is, you know, is putting out a statement against, you know, folks that supported her opponent and her opponent's supporters are saying, you know, how they feel about her. I mean, that's just how it is. Politics get dirty and unfortunately, you know, they, they can be, you know, um, just not good environments to be a part of. But, I mean, I think that's the nature of anything. I just think with politics is a lot more heightened because it's more visible and you're dealing with the public's money. So, you know, there's a lot more scrutiny involved, so just naturally, there's more visibility around it.
Got you. Now, us being black men and, and you being in a position of power of what you are, do you feel like you have a target on your back? Just because you're in power and there's some people like, why is he in power? So let's maybe do whatever we need to do to maybe remove him from power. Do you think that is a common thing or is that, is that just myths? What do you think?
No, it's reality. I experienced it myself. So that, that actually happens. And, and unfortunately, you just have to deal with it. And, you know, anytime you're standing in your truth and you believe in something and it disrupts the status quo or the complacent leadership that was in place, people aren't gonna be happy and people are gonna want you gone. And they, they're gonna attempt to do things to remove you. It's just naturally how the system operates.
And I can't, you know, help but to ignore, I can't ignore the fact that I know that you've been, you know, even targeted. I know your car was, um, hijacked a few months ago. You know what I'm saying? And, and, no, but things like that. Do you think that it's bigger than what it just looks like? It's maybe a, an attack on you that.
You know, I try not to feed into like conspiracy theories or just these ideas. I believe everything happens for a reason in life. And at the end of the day, you know, my car was stolen. I was indicted, you know, as a council member uh, for some stuff in my life from my past. I mean, those things happen and, and I think you, you're in a public space. And when you're speaking truth to power, not everyone is going to appreciate it. Not everyone's gonna like it. Some people are gonna see it as a personal attack. Some people are going to not agree with you. And there are repercussions for everything that we do. And, and it's just what it is. And I've learned to just surrender to the process and continue being my truthful and authentic self regardless of what comes from that happening. I know that at least I can say I was being truthful and honest.
A hundred percent facts, man. Yes. Why are you dishonest? Why, why do you just give your entire life to the world like that? And just, you know, even when I just saw, I heard, you know, not to bring it up, but I definitely heard your nine one one call and I'm like, this is really frantic. And I'm like, for me, I think that would have been like, this is enough for me. I'm done. But, you know, for you, you're still, even right now on this journey, you're still a hundred percent authentic.
Hold on. Did they put out a nine one one call that I had?
Yeah, they did. It's on the internet.
Oh, did you know that? Oh, really? I didn't know that.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's.
Put out the, the recording of the nine one one call? They did? Oh, I didn't even pay attention. I didn't know they did that. Oh, okay. I see. That, that should tell you I don't even pay attention to that.
Yeah, I, 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 I know. I don't wanna be breaking news on black culture, but that, it, it's, it's definitely on the news. But I'm just saying, just through that experience, just through that experience, and but it's the way the media spins things. Or it's multiple clips of it up on the internet, um, actually. You know, so, but it's the way, and, you know, if you, if you're not involved in it, which is dope because you protect your peace. Um, the way that media spins things, it's like, do you feel like there is a target on just a black man's back? And, and for the next guy that wants to come up after you, what they should just be on the lookout for? How do you stay clean in these streets?
Well, let me just tell you, you know, I, I've always been the type of person where I really don't give a damn about what, what people think or have to say. And a lot of people on Fox News was really mad that I didn't press charges on the kids that stole my car. And they wanted me to have them arrested. And, and if you see the video of the kids, they're like, one kid had a toy in his hand. He's like, couldn't have been more than like five, five, four, five years old, six, somewhere around there. You know, so when you think about that, it's like, I don't care. Like, say what you wanna say. I was like, I didn't press charges because these kids are in environment, are products of their environment and condition. And, you know, they probably did what they felt like they needed to do. You know, that's material. Those things can be replaced. The human life cannot be replaced. So I didn't even know that Fox had recordings of the nine one one call, but that is hilarious. But e- even with that, it's like, so like, what, what, what? Like I said, hey, my car was stolen by some kids and that we, you know, it's like, what? Like, you know, we should be talking about why it took police forty-five minutes to come.
Um, defund the police has been the theme of the year, right? Maybe a mayor phased out a little bit, fizzled out a little bit now and people started realizing like, oh, if we defund the police, I guess they don't necessarily know what that meant. Kinda explain what that means already so people can understand. What does defunding the police mean?
Well, I don't understand. Uh, I, I didn't, I never supported defunding the police. Like, I've always spoken about reimagining public safety because I don't believe it's realistic to be able to defund the police in the context in which it was being spoken. Like, I think some elected officials was just using it to be divisive and to create disruption around what people were really asking for. Cause what people were really asking for was for a reallocation of funding to go towards non-emergency services like mental health and substance abuse, things that we should be funding and supporting to ensure we're addressing the root causes of crime in our city. You know, I think that's what people really wanted to see. Um, and you have folks that spent it into this theory about defunding the police and not having police and just all this stuff that was done was nothing more than a distraction from us talking about the real issues we were facing.
Definitely, man. Super dope that, one thing I would say is you stick to your word and I saw you on The Black Report with Ebony K. Um, and, you know, I know, I know she talked about just the violence and, um, a lot about the violence in Atlanta. And you said, listen, if I had left with no other option, I would probably steal as well. And, you know, and, and the fact that even when it.
We all would. We're survivors. It's, it's our. It is our innate, an innate response. We are placed in a situation where we must survive. All of us would do it. No matter where you lived in this city, all of us would do it. And that's the unfortunate part is that we've disconnected the reality of humanity in which we exist within.
Absolutely, man. Um, but as long as you stick, sticking to your, um, your statements, man, and, and you definitely do. And, you know, and, and, and with, with politics, it's really easy to get somebody to say whatever they feel like they need to say just to kinda avoid questions. But the fact that you're a hundred percent honest, I definitely commend you. And here on Black Culture, we wanna just keep it real. And you're a hundred percent real. Appreciate that. Yes.
Yeah, it's so funny. Uh, I, I had recently another council member say to me, they were like, hey, thank you for running for city council. And I was like, oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, running for, for mayor. And I said, yeah, absolutely. I said, they're like, you know, one thing I can appreciate about you is who you were on council is who you were when you ran for mayor. You never changed who your authentic self was. And I respect that because I can trust that because I know that that's who you are and that you're not just gonna change the moment something happens controversial or, you know, things happen in which, you know, I, I feel like I have to say something to appease someone.
Absolutely, man. Well, I feel like that's pretty much everything that he wrote. Man, tell the people what you got coming up that we need to be on the lookout for. What's up with Antonio?
So I am in the process of launching a business right now. And, uh, I really can't talk much about it, but it's in the food, food space. And I'm gonna do that along with, um, working with an asset protection securities firm um, that I'm helping to launch globally. Uh, they're in South Africa. Bring them over into the United States so they can launch globally here. And then, um, and then I'm also gonna do some community engagement work, you know, around civic participation on the local level.
Dope. So you're definitely having a whole bunch of stuff set up. And then when does the ele- when does the city council position get re-elected? How, how long do you have left in your term?
So, uh, so we just had an election and we just elected the next city council member. So they'll start in January.
January. Oh, so you're basically phasing out as the last couple of weeks?
Absolutely, yes.
Um, now, are you excited for your new test? Nervous about?
No, I'm excited.
Excited.
Yeah.
On your bucket list?
Say it again?
Is traveling on your bucket list?
Oh, man, I've already been doing a shitload of traveling. I ju- I went out to Amsterdam right after the election and then I went to DC and then I just got back from Houston, Texas and I'm leaving for New York next week. So, uh, it's, it's a little crazy.
Definitely. The legendary Rodney Perry just entered the live. What up, Rodney? Uh, well, man, whenever you in New York, you gotta definitely plug to the dance school and, and, and.
I'm there next week.
You here next week? Well, we got a link then, bro.
Yeah, yeah, we will. I'll give you my number when we get off of here.
Absolutely, man. Well, let everybody know where they can find you and if there's anything else that we should be on the lookout.
Yeah, no, everyone can find me right here on Instagram. Antonio is muted and it's the same handle on some of my other platforms. So folks can communicate with me on here. And hey, man, I appreciate this opportunity of speaking with you.
Of course, man. Thank you so much for coming on here and talking with me. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm actually pretty, we used to get grants from our council members here in New York. Um, and, but now that you're, you know, when, maybe if you're here, I'm not sure. Are you familiar with Councilwoman Lori Combo? She's based in New York.
I'm not, I'm not.
Okay. Well, she's a, a big advocate for the arts and she has like her own like, you know, museum here and like stuff like that. And it seems like you're in that kinda artistic space. I know you mentioned food, so we'll talk offline. But, uh, but I think there's some connections that can be made here and doing what it is that you got planned.
It sounds good. I would love that.
It's about to be Antonio Unmuted, okay? Alright, man. Thanks again and everybody tapping in. This is Black Culture to Break Down. We got Antonio Brown on here. Thanks again for tapping in. The replay is free, so make sure y'all go ahead and watch that. And this will be up on Spotify, Apple Music and everything you find, social media and podcasts tomorrow morning, so make sure y'all tap in. Alright, this episode is sponsored by Spicy Chain. I don't have them on right now, but if you put in my discount code at Black Culture to Break Down, you do get fifteen percent off. I'm super tired. Antonio, I gotta go home now and we do gotta wrap it up. So thanks again, everybody, and we will see y'all. Appreciate you, Antonio.
Absolutely, man. Thank you for having me, bro.
Alright, deuces. Alright, so that was Antonio Brown. Now, listen, I gotta get a pot of here, but if you didn't hit the follow button, make sure you do that because it's free. I definitely am the person that interviews everybody. Check out my interview with Raz B. It was last week. Check out my interview with, um, the guy, the owner of Fox Soul. Um, check out my interview with Rodney Perry. He was just on the live just now. He was on the Monique Show. Jason leaving Hollywood unlocked. The list goes on and on. I've interviewed pretty much everybody except Beyonce. Can I get Beyonce to come on here? Yes. Anyways, at the end of the day, I appreciate y'all. Thanks for watching. This is Black Culture to Break Down. Deuces.